Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to bring the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 to order. If we could get a determination of quorum, please.
Sarah Savilecik.
Here.
Francine Donchik.
Here.
Michael Flick.
Here.
Dan Lazariski.
Here.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Pat Phillips.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ms. Gustafson, if we could get the ethics law announcement, please.
...business or similar relationship, or if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here before you today, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Our commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. Secretary Lloyd, if we could get the appeal procedure, please.
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Before we open public comment, I want to just read it. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. However, action may not be taken on any matter raised during this public comment period until the matter is specifically listed on the agenda as an action item. Comments are to be made to the Planning Commission as a whole. Ladies and gentlemen, do we have any public comment at this time?
We have no public comment in chambers or Zoom.
As we have no public comment time, I will close public comment and move on to item six, approval of the April 4th, 2023 agenda.
Commissioner Nelson will approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson, do we have a second?
This is Rob, I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any corrections or discussion at this time? Hearing none. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We move on to the approval of the March 7th, 2023 minutes. Is there a motion at this time?
Commissioner Lazariski, I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazariski. Do we have a second?
This is Rob, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, I will close. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We move on to item eight, public hearing. First item, Secretary Lloyd, if you could, please.
Yes, this is Development Code Amendment, case number WDC A220004, for a Development Code cleanup and maintenance, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to initiate a Development Code amendment and approve a resolution recommending adoption of an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 within Article 302, Article 304, Article 406, and Article 902. The intent is to provide clarity on single-family accessory uses, to allow childcare, family daycare use types in the general rural and neighborhood commercial regulatory zones, allow large family daycare use type with an administrative permit instead of a special use permit in the neighborhood commercial reg zone, to allow personal services use type within the industrial and public and semi-public facilities regulatory zones, include information technology services within the definition of an administrative office's use type, include contractor's office with or without an equipment yard as an example of the construction, sales, and services use type, create a definition for security fence, and provide standards for allowing security fencing on parcels of land that do not have an established main use. To allow for a tall, allow for tall specialty fences for uses such as ballparks and sports fields, and place communication facilities in the civic rather than the commercial use table. If the proposed amendments are initiated, the Planning Commission may recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the proposed ordinance as submitted, may recommend approval with modifications based on input and discussion at the public hearing, or may deny the proposed amendment. If approved, if approval is recommended, the Planning Commission is asked to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect.
Thank you.
Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Roger Pellon.
Thank you, Roger. One moment. Just out of curiosity, is there any public comment on this item in chambers or via Zoom?
I have no public.
Not at this time.
Thank you, Roger.
Roger, just make sure that the clicker's on. The side should have, either be red or green, there'd be a little slide button.
Looks like it's red.
Okay. If it's red, slide it on so you'll be able to click.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, Roger Pellon with Washoe County Planning. In the interest of brevity, I think I'm going to just go ahead and skip right past the description there because Planning Manager Lloyd just read that. Each one of these amendments in and of themselves are really relatively minor. This is the type of thing that we do every so often. It's really sort of a process of continuous improvement. These are things that come up over time, and eventually we kind of get a little bucket full of them, then we sort of take them all forward at the same time. So each one of these, again, really, I'm just going to spend a minute or two. If anyone does have questions, please, you know, feel free to interrupt, but I think we have what, a dozen or so of these, so I'm going to hit each one pretty light. Family daycare. We allow that in a couple of places. We didn't allow it in general rural and general rural agricultural. Those are zonings that allow single-family dwellings. It's perfectly appropriate. Communications facilities, removing that out of the commercial use type and into the civic. Why is that? Because it's under the jurisdiction of the Public Utilities Commission. So this is really just a better way. And what you're going to find in several of these is just a little bit better way to organize a lot of these. Here, okay, I'm not sure how many I went forward there. One moment. Technology. I think I skipped one the first time. Yes, I did. Within the residential use types, we have the accessory dwellings and the accessory structures that are up under family residential. And just by way of better organization, those actually belong under single-family detached because they are, in fact, accessory to, single-family detached, not family residential uses. Already spoken about daycare. Personal services, not allowed at this time in industrial and public and semi-public facilities. We have a lot of uses that are substantially more intense than personal services. This is going to be something like a barber shop or, or a nail salon, things of that nature. Certainly appropriate in those zones, in our opinion. And it's been brought to our attention because there have been people that have wanted to do that. Information technology. You know, this, this is something that is ever more important in our society, and we didn't have a very good place to put that. This is where we've been putting it, okay? But that has been more of an interpretation. This is simply meant to make it easier for other folks to come to that same conclusion. Okay. Construction, sales, and services. Again, while we have been interpreting that a contractor's yard, and if he has some trucks and trailers and that sort of thing, and I'm talking, I'm not talking about big rigs, that's, that's something different. We have been putting it in this use type, and we're simply making it explicit. And this one has actually come up very often over the years. Specialty fences. We have approved things like baseball diamonds and, and the nets adjacent to driving ranges for golf and those sorts of things many times. And specialty fences have always been in the code, but technically, they've been limited to 12 feet. And, and what we've done in the past is we've said, well, a baseball backstop, that's not really a fence, that's actually more like a structure that happens to be made out of the same thing that fences are made out of. Well, we just wanted to get rid of that ambiguity. Also, again, up to 30 feet in height, that's, somebody looked that up for me, and apparently that's what baseball diamonds are, is 30 feet. But also other things, if you need higher for other purposes with the director's modification of standards, we're saying, look, bring your proposal to the director, they can take a look at it, they can see if it's reasonable, and then say yes or no. Maybe it needs to be taller for some reason. Maybe it's, you know, the elevation as opposed to a roadway. We'd prefer to keep, you know, golf balls or baseballs from bouncing down on people while they're driving. This one, security fences, is probably the most substantive of any of our little changes we're bringing forward. And this is something that has come, sort of questions that have come up at the front desk many times. And usually, it goes something like, I have a vacant parcel, and I have a problem. The problem is people are either dumping on it, or they're dumping junk vehicles, or for whatever reason, people are accessing this parcel, and I don't want them to. It, it can be a safety problem, it can be a crime problem, like dumping, that sort of thing. But we as staff also have a problem with that, because if you can put up a, we, we can't put up a fence on a vacant parcel, it's considered an accessory use. If we were to allow them just to put up any fence, well, then you can possibly have a solid fence. Well, then you have a perfect place for illegal storage to take place, because you can't do storage on an otherwise undeveloped parcel. So what do we do? Well, we're going to create a new use type, or at least we're proposing to a security fence, and it has some, some standards there, and mostly it's that they need to be nice and sturdy, and we need to be able to see through them. It needs to be either chain link, or if not chain link, then something similar, and again, we're going to put this on the director with, with the modification, to say that we can see through this so that code enforcement doesn't have a problem. Because that was the first thing that came up when we were discussing this internally, is code enforcement says, if they're doing a bunch of storage and we can't see it, well, then we have no way to enforce. And that in and of itself creates other problems. So what we've done is we've tried to balance those, those two perspectives. One, let's go ahead and let these folks fence off their areas so that they can have some security, but not allow them to do sort of this illegal storage with, and create a situation where we can't enforce. Part of that, even though we, so we have the standards in the code, but we also need the definition, that's going to be in Section 902. The standards themselves are in 406, which are actually building placement standards. And those are all of them. Findings, none of these are inconsistent with the master plan. I believe these all promote the purpose of the Development Code. All of these are responding to either changed conditions or conditions that are being brought to our attention at this time. I do not believe there are any adverse impacts, impacts either. In fact, I think these are all benefits. And by the way, not all of the changes that were suggested were brought forward. This, this went through a fairly rigorous internal process before we went out and did a public workshop, made a few changes, and are bringing it forward to you now. So my recommendation is approval. I know that's a whole lot of words on that slide, I'm sorry, but it's also in your staff report, so I would suggest reading it from there. And with that, I'm available for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any questions at this time for, for Roger?
Yeah, this is Rob. I've got a question. On the security fences, I don't, maybe I just missed it. It doesn't say how tall.
Can we pull my?
Did I miss that?
They have to be on the property line, and they're limited to the height as it's allowed in the regulatory zone.
So if it's residential, it's?
Residential, it's going to be six feet, commercial or industrial. It can be eight.
Okay.
Nearly all of these, in fact, all that I can think of, are residential.
Okay.
So, and it's actually... Okay, we're both clicking, so I'll just.
Oh, you go ahead, you go ahead. I'll be. Stop clicking.
And what we have here is under E2, the allowable height of a security fence is defined at Washoe County Code 110-46050. Actually, that should be 40650. But, but that's where that does. Basically, it's what's allowed by the zone.
All right. All right, thank you.
If I can piggyback onto that, and within the front yard setback, it's limited to four and a half feet. So outside of that, it is six feet.
Yes.
Pat Phillips, I have a question for staff. With the contractor's office, I've seen this done, and I'm wondering on the wording in this going into a rural zoning. And I, I have seen where contractors do have an office at their home, and there are numerous vehicles all the time, in and out and everything. Is there any kind of control?
Yes, there is. And primarily, what I'm going to say is, that's not the kind of contractor's office we're talking about. If they're doing that out of their home, and that's a home-based business, and they've got a bunch of, of trucks and trailers and, and employees coming and going. Then I would say that that's very likely going to be a violation to start with, because that would be a home-based business license. This, we're talking about a commercial use type that's going to be primarily in a commercial or industrial zone.
This, this is Rob again. Couple of minutes ago, I thought you said this was primary residential. Now it's commercial?
Oh, it's a different area. You sound like a different part.
It does come under commercial.
Um, now, so what's, right now, a lot of people, from what I've seen, put up temporary fencing. So this is going to hopefully solve that, or what's the idea there?
Well, I, I don't know what it would be solving in terms of a temporary fence. Temporary fences are typically done for things like ongoing construction sites, you know, while building permits are issued in sort of, that sort of temporary situation. This really isn't. This is for a parcel of land that is currently undeveloped, and they have no intention of developing at this time, and have the problem of unauthorized access.
Okay. All right, all right.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I have a follow-up. Pat Phillips, a follow-up question on that. On the first page that describes the case description, it is the only one that does not describe contractor's office and in what zone. That's about two-thirds of the way down.
Yes. The reason for that is, the zones in which is allowed is not changing. We are simply creating greater specificity for the use itself, for the definition of the use type. Again, if you would pull my presentation back up. So if, so while we're doing that, if we were to go look at Article 302, where we have the table and where each of these uses is allowed, that's all staying exactly the same. The only thing that we're doing is for that particular use type, we're adding just those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight words, just to make it clear, that's where that commercial use type belongs.
According to the table in 302, that, that use type is only allowed in, in industrial, that's by right in industrial, and it, it requires a special use permit in commercial. Those are the only two regulatory zones where it's allowed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions? Hearing no further questions, I'll bring it back to closing the public comment. Any other discussion? No discussions. I'll enter, enter a call for a motion.
Chair Donchik, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you. Vice Chair Savilecik.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commision initiate amendments to the Washoe County Development Code and recommend approval of WDC A22-0004 to adopt an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 with Articles 302 allowed use, Article 304 use classification system, Article 406 building placement standards, and Article 902 definitions as described in the staff report for this matter. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Exhibit A to this effect, and to direct staff to present a report of this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation, recommendation for approval is based on all four findings set forth in the Washoe County Code Section 110.818.15 (E).
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, maybe.
Jen Gustafson, for the record. I would recommend that we include in the motion that the change, the fix that Roger mentioned to the code.
Oh, Roger, if you could.
It was a mistake in the ordinance as well, so.
If you could specify that, so we could.
Yeah, the reference being to Article 406, not 460, on that one description.
And my motion includes the correction to the correct article.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We move on to our next item. Item 8B, Secretary Lloyd, if you would, please.
Nelson? Sorry, Trevor.
All right, this is item 8B, Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 230001, and Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 230001, for the Village Green Commerce Center specific plan. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, adopt amendments to the Spanish Springs Area Plan, which is a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to change the Master Plan land use designation for three parcels, 534-56101, 04, and 05, from commercial to industrial. To adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix D, Village Green Commerce Center specific plan, to add three parcels, APNs 534-56101, 04, and 05, to the specific plan. Three, adopt amendments to the Washoe County Master Plan, Spanish Springs Area Plan, Appendix D, Village Green Commerce Center specific plan, to include the following, A, update maps to include the three new parcels and update acreage, and B, to add a building setback of 150 feet from Pyramid Highway. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Any approval would be subject to further approval by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, and to find a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. And four, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, recommend adoption of an amendment to the Spanish Springs Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone for three parcels, APNs 534-56101, 04, and 05, from neighborhood commercial to industrial, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Julie Olander.
Thank you, Trevor. Before we get started, I have to ask any disclosures by commissioners, either for ethics or ex parte communications. Hearing none. Thank you, Julie.
Good evening, Julie Olander, for the record. So as Plan Comis, Plan Manager, Mr. Lloyd, read off, this is a, a master plan amendment and a zone change. I'm going to leave this up just for you to visually see instead of hearing it. I, I don't want to, need to read it to you again, but I just want you to understand there's basically three master plan amendments, and then the final step is the zone change. So this is, again, Village Green, which many of you have seen before, but this is adding the three parcels that are highlighted in yellow to the Village Green, and to bring them up to the same standards as the parcels are to the, to the east or to the right. As many of you know, this plan has gone through, the Village Green Plan was developed in 2009 to allow industrial uses, had specific goals and standards that promoted a, and supported commerce and employment in the Spanish Springs area. It was originally going to be developed by a master developer with oversight on the land use, the transportation, infrastructure, site planning, architecture, energy efficiency criteria, tenant criteria, signs, lighting, and landscaping. However, the plan's been amended several times. In 2004, the one parcel where the house is located at 30, I like, I think I'm, I'm missing a digit on Calle de la Plata, was removed. However, just this past January, that, that applicant, that parcel was added back into the specific plan. And then also, there was amendments in 2019 and '22, also updating the plan to be more current with, and fit the current industrial standards. So that's the background. And then this is the master plan request. This is, you can see the highlighting area in the, on the left, you see the little dotted lines, and then on the left, on the right, you can see where the three parcels are now gray, that would be proposed to go to industrial. Thank you. And again, I put this in here, but I'm not going to read through, but I do want to just, so these three, these three parcels are coming in, are being amended, master plan, their master plan amendment is to industrial, they're also being brought into the Village Green specific plant, plan, and then we're updating basically two things within the specific plan, which is updating the maps, and then adding the acreage. And then we also added a building setback of 150 feet from Pyramid Highway, so all buildings need be that far from the highway. And that mirrors what's happening on the other side of Pyramid for the parcels that are off of Isabel, and where there's a lot more industrial, and that industrial is much more significant. They have, they are not restricted by the height restriction of 60, they can go up to 65 feet with this, in this specific plan, they have other restriction, including the height. And here is the zone change. So again, we have the purple on the left, which is NC, and then on the right, it's changed to gray, which is industrial. I wanted to just go over the facilities a little bit. As you all know, this area has been planned for this type of development since 2009, so that those, the needs that have been planned out there have been somewhat in place. Also, there's been development in the area, there's been two large subdivisions, Blackstone with 214 units, and Sugarloaf with 199 units, that have come in on the north side of Calle de la Plata. And the agencies have had time to review the infrastructure and the utility needs of the subdivisions, and then also for this, this development. And as you know, all, as development comes in, they go through building permits, they have to show that they can meet the, the standards out there. The applicant is planning to have water from Tamwatt, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and then the sewer syst, sewer service will be from the county. The sewer will be conveyed from Truckee Meadows, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which is owned and operated by the City of Sparks. And there is a letter from the City of Sparks that's included in, I believe it is Exhibit D, with all the other agency letters, that expresses concern about wastewater volumes that will be generated by this use. However, the engineering department, our engineering department, also included, included a letter in that Exhibit D, and they have shown that the calculations for the wastewater usage for commercial is higher than it is for industrial. So the industrial wastewater usage will be lower. And again, engineering confirmed that when there's a specific project that's going on, when the building permit comes in, they will review it and confirm that there is capacity for the wastewater. Also, the applicant has discussed, been, been in discussions with Nevada State Department of Transportation, NDOT, to obtain right-of-way access from Pyramid Highway. There is an undeveloped roadway, and I'll show you this in just a minute, that travels north-south from Calle de la Plata, and that will provide access to the three new parcels. And this roadway will be, have to be developed to Washoe County standards. And here is where you can see Rockwell Boulevard, so it goes through those three parcels from Calle de la Plata. And that roadway will be used to do the, get access. And that roadway will be used to do the, get access from Calle de la Plata. There have been overall changes out there in that area, including the large residential developments that have gone on, and the specific plan, as I've said, has been updated numerous times to accommodate the changes that we have seen in industrial, the type of industrial uses that are needed in that area. And according to the applicant, there is a need for more industrial in that area. The two parcels that are located at Pyramid and Calle de la Plata, that total six acres, that will remain zoned NC, that's what they are currently, and those two parcels are not included in this application, they will still be available to develop with neighborhood commercial uses for the area. The applicant did held a neighborhood meeting on December nineteenth at Spanish Springs Library, and there were sixteen attendees. They had questions about traffic, they indicated it was already bad in the area. They also had questions about water, it impacted existing wells, building height, and the need to retain commercial and retail in the area, and that there was no need for industrial. As many of you know, we received a slurry of emails yesterday, and they were forwarded to you opposing the industrial use from from commercial. And if you have further questions about that, I'm available for, to answer any of those.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Oh, I'm still going, sorry. The property owners were noticed within seventy, seven hundred and fifty feet of the site, and that was seventy-six notices that were sent out. A legal ad was placed in the Reno Gazette on January twenty-third. As all applications, this was sent out to the various departments, and they did review it, and those comments are included in your staff report. Staff can make all the findings, and the possible motion is in your staff report. And the applicant is here for questions. I don't, if you want to ask me questions first or just move on to him.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
Yes. Good evening, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me is Rex Massey with Industrial Realty Group, the project applicant. And I do have a brief PowerPoint. The first few slides will be repetitive of Julie's, but just touch on a few points if I can get that pulled up. Okay. So these first few are just, Julie covered probably better than I would have. So just some things to consider, I think Julie did a great job explaining what the changes are. There is no development proposed at this time, this is simply a land use request. If you look at the site and the kind of the site dimensions, it really does lend itself well to a smaller scale industrial, not what we have across the highway in the Hocko Park, but really more of a smaller scale building, perhaps a flex space type use. We did retain the commercial at the corner, there was concern from the residents, they did want some commercial out there. If you look at the overall market demands to have twenty-five acres of commercial is really more of like a regional center type commercial. And with the development of the Winko Center just to the south and all the commercial that's going into Cali Ranch, it's really not a viable commercial site. More importantly, I think if you look at how much traffic a regional center would draw on that site compared to what industrial draws, you know, just running some basic trip generation numbers, if you were to put that Winko Center, for example, that's a little further south on the site as a comparable commercial use, traffic is reduced by about seventy percent trip generation between that and industrial. So that, I think, addresses a lot of the concerns that we heard about traffic. Once again, a site-specific project can be conditioned to address neighborhood concerns. The remainder of the Village Green, those buildings are starting to come forward through the building permit process, so the traffic studies are underway. We'll have much detailed traffic analysis that we'll submit with our building permit for review by the engineering department. Really, when we looked at this, the benefit to going into the specific plan is I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that we've heard over the years. Obviously has much greater buffering and screening requirements than a standard industrial zone. It's limited to the building, it limits the building heights, as Julie mentioned, across the highway under standard industrial, you could have sixty-foot buildings. The specific plan, specific plan limits building heights to forty feet, and then any building over thirty-five feet has additional setback requirements. So it really is is not comparable to what's across the highway. And I've listed those setbacks there, so you can see there's fifty-foot landscape buffer on the south, Pyramid Highway is a hundred and fifty feet, and Mr. Herman, who I think is going to speak under public comment, questioned where that hundred and fifty feet is measured from, it's measured from the edge of the right-of-way, so it's a hundred and fifty feet from the right-of-way, not of the pavement. And then, as I mentioned, increased setbacks for buildings over thirty-five feet in height. Also, there is some public trail easements along the south side, all those would be retained, and no changes proposed with this. It looks like something got carried over the trail easement, but also the specific plan has limitations on delivery hours. Under the current zoning, if a commercial center was built, the deliveries could occur twenty-four hours a day. So I think that's another benefit to the surrounding area. Restrictions on dock door locations, as those of you that were on the commission when those amendments went through, a hundred-foot separation from residentially zoned property, and then additional screening requirements for dock doors, those wouldn't apply under the conventional industrial zoning, so another benefit going to the specific plan. And then if you read through the area plan policies and kind of regional plan policies about promoting a jobs housing balance, we think this definitely does, there's a lot of people that commute out of the valley now. In fact, as Rex has mentioned in the past, there has been a company that has primarily, their employees live in Spanish Springs, they're very interested in this site in order to provide that, you know, shorter commute time. So with that, I'll wrap up my presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, at this point, I want to call for public comment, either in chambers or via Zoom or.
Yes, in chambers, we have Thor Simmons, followed by Christie Simmons. If you could please state your first and last name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Thor Simmons. This, I don't need to point out because you saw it on the map, my general idea is that within a five-mile radius, we have at least five builders building twelve residential communities. This is a growing residential area that I believe doesn't need conversion of commercial property, which could services this growing residential area. It should remain commercial. And I refer you to the Truckee Meadow Regional Plan that on page forty, paragraph five, lists how you guys should evaluate decisions, and it should be the effectively achieve the desire outcome specified, and then on page forty-one, they give those goals, one through six, number one being quality of regional life, and number six engagement and decision-making. Okay, last month, you had your own person here, under the empower Washoe County twenty forty, give you an idea of what the residents of Spanish Springs want. And they, he told you that we have the smaller properties that don't count as rural, because they're not those big twenty, thirty, forty-acre properties, they're third to one-acre properties, and some have a horse. You were asking, how does they get the outreach to the community, and he explained how he got the outreach, and he told you the overwhelming support, or the overwhelming demand or desire of the people of Spanish Springs, even though they don't technically live in the rural community, they want to lead a rural lifestyle. And he didn't explain what the rural lifestyle was, and I made a comment on that, you know, how do you make a decision like this one without knowing what that rural lifestyle is that the people want? And I just let you use the Truckee Meadow Regional Plan, and I think if you look at what the people want in that rural lifestyle, that goes with one and six, and is against turning that commercial property into industrial property. It should remain a commercial property for things like restaurants, stores, I would love to see a Chick-fil-A franchise or a dollar store there. This is a growing residential community, which is, doesn't even include my projections of the developers, the apartment complex going in just north of the twenty-four-hour ER that was open. It just opened an emergency room twenty-four hours a day because the residential area that is growing so fast needs those type of services. So I personally against it, and I think if you use your common sense and go with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, that will guide you to say no to this proposed change in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christie Simmons, followed by Dan Herman.
Hello. My name is Christie Simmons, and whatever he said, I agree with one hundred percent. I'm a librarian at Lincoln Park Elementary. We lived in Spanish Springs now for four years, I really enjoy the Reno area, I enjoy our new homes. But one of the things that they did not provide with the new homes, and when I talked to the lady that we were purchasing our homes from, they're, they don't provide any open space, no parks, no tennis courts, no swimming pools. I have to drive ten miles down to Prater to play tennis, I have to drive way over the hill to get to a local swimming pool, and this is an area that has a lot of young people, a lot of young families, I would say we're probably the oldest old-timers there right now. But it would be fantastic if they would consider maybe the county making the purchase, or the City of Sparks, and turning it into a sort of a community center place, where if you had a pool, you could teach lifeguarding, swim school, CPR classes, a small park, dog run, a small snack bar, community center, something where that whole community would benefit from. I can't even use like the tennis courts up at the high school during COVID, they locked them up. And this is a huge family, you know, residential area that has really no place to play, and it's unfortunate because it's close by, it's accessible now because you've actually added the the new streetlights that really slow down the mass traffic that goes way out to Pyramid now, that's been a huge safety factor that's that's been improved and added, it's very important. And again, we just don't have anything out there, really, that's close by, that would benefit the entire community, you know, young and old, a community center for older people, a daycare area, like he was saying, daycare for, you know, preschool type of situation for all these families that that really need something that would support that area, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name's Dan Herman. I've lived close to these proposed development here for twenty-seven years. I'm on a ten-acre parcel. I have some concerns. My main one is the citizens at the neighborhood meeting, which is the new way to inform the citizens, which isn't working, by the way. None of the four items, I believe, were traffic, water, building height, none of those were addressed by the developer. That is why we had the neighborhood meetings, so the developer could address those to the citizens before they do an application. I didn't see anywhere in rereading their applications where those four items were addressed, it was just blank spaces in the application response from the developer. I think we can do better. Also, I went to the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three neighborhood meeting, and I'm astounded that they're adding this, these parcels into the Spanish Springs specific plan. I don't know where that came from, I don't, I'm not sure that's legal to do that, just to add this into an existing specific plan. Maybe you guys could do it, I think somebody ought to take a look at it. Mike Raely, I'll give him credit, I asked him the question, is a hundred and fifty feet setback from the buildings, is that from the right-of-way, or is that from the existing highway? That road is going to go for two more lanes, it's going to be a four-lane road in the in the future, and their right-of-way is east of the existing pyramid highways, they're going to go east of where they are to two lanes, so I'm glad, Mike, I clarified that. I would like to see that in writing in the in the plan. My main concern is building height. These parcels are already elevated anywhere from three to five feet above the existing Pyramid Highway, and that was the material that was taken out of the detention basin when they made that, and all that fill was put in these parcels. So those parcels are already sticking up another, you know, three to five feet above the existing elevation Pyramid Highway and Calle de la Plata. So I think the building height needs to be less than than they're requesting, and again, I need, I need better feedback from the developers when we do these neighborhood meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no further public comment in chambers.
There is no public comment on Zoom.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions of staff, applicant, or members of the public. Ladies and gentlemen, you have questions? Yes, Vice Chair Sevillecheck.
Thank you, this would be for staff and maybe applicant, but we'll see where we go. Could you put the maps back up, please? Okay, great. So, so in between the the big swatch of the open space, we already, there's already a small industrial section there, which would be to the west, maybe? Yes, east, okay. That's already zoned industrial, correct?
Correct, and I apologize, when these maps were made, the regional had not approved, as you, right above that gray is, it's still yellow, that's residential, that has changed, and I apologize. These are the maps I took from the staff report, however, those maps have been updated since regional approved that parcel with the house on it.
Right.
That has now gone industrial also, and that.
So that's a one solid piece of gray on the other side of the open space.
Maybe it'll go back. Oops. So where the, you see the three parcels, which we're talking about today, then the two parcels to the the right, that's where the detention is, that's still part of the specific plan, though. And then the three parcels further that are included in the black line, those are all industrial now.
Okay, okay, okay. So in terms of, so now if you could go back to that other map. So the the two, the three lower sections that are are now proposed for industrial, and so the big open space is the detention basin, correct? And so in terms of, what are the mitigating, I mean, how is it going to be mitigated for runoff and such? I mean, I know it's a detention basin, but in terms of as construction is happening or whatever's going on, in terms of essentially maintaining the integrity of that detention space and an open space?
Well, that won't change, that will remain the same, and then if they, if this was approved, the three new parcels, they would not be able to impact those, the detention, the existing detention area.
Okay. And and Julie, I really appreciate how many, giving us the full background, and it, we have seen this project so many times, and it's, you know, its first iteration was residential, and I mean, and it's just, I, you know, and counsel may say, you know, don't ask this question, but I'm just, is this the last time?
Mr. Raely and I have spoken of this, at this point, there's very little less, the Spanish Springs area plan has a limited amount of commercial industrial. I don't believe, I'm not sure how that's going to, where that's going to go with the new, in the update to the master plan, the envisioned twenty twenty four, twenty forty. However, currently, there's very little, and I think it's in my staff report, I'd have to look how many, how much is left, but there's very little left, so. And I don't believe that this is, they need any more industrial, I think, as people have pointed out, they need some areas that can be developed for a grocery store or restaurants or whatever. So that neighborhood commercial, those twelve acres of neighborhood, or six acres of neighborhood commercial, will allow that to be maintained, and so that still, and that's right on the corner, which, and then there's property to the north is also neighborhood commercial. So the, right there on the corner of Calle de la Plata and Pyramid, there is area that can be developed for commercial uses. So I'm hoping that there's no change, any more changes to Village Green, I'll pass it on to somebody else if there is.
I mean, regional staff said, oh, so we're going to see it another time? Yes, we are. Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Phillips. I'm looking back at how many times this has come before.
I'm looking back at how many times this has come before us. And it's almost like there were little steps taken that lead up to something bigger. That's how it looks to me. But for sure, I mean, is this really what they want?
Julie Olander with Planning and Building for the Record. I believe so. At this point, I can't anticipate, and I'm not sure that staff would support any more going industrial, because we want to maintain some commercial out there for the residents. I don't see the, the area that they would need to go industrial. So I would say yes. And I just want to make it clear that the, the changes that are made to Village Green, what happened originally was there was a master developer, and he was going to develop all four of those parcels. However, well, three parcels, because two were for the detention. However, that master developer during the downturn, lost these parcels. And what happened was then these parcels got sold off to individual people. And as those individual people decided to start developing them, they realized the Village Green plan really had some constraints. And so they came back. And, and so basically, what we've seen is we've seen each one of these parcels, the property owner come back in and have to amend Village Green for them, for it to work for them. That the original plan that was set up was a plan that might have worked with our master developer, but it won't work for individual property owners. And that's what we have currently out there, is we have individual property owners. None of, well, I shouldn't say none, but the properties are basically owned individually at this time.
Good explanation.
Commissioner Flick, I think you said you had a question.
I'm a little confused. We're, we're talking about industrial, and then we're talking about commercial. And it was mentioned that there is some existing commercial. Is that part of this project?
No.
Oh, okay.
So the existing commercial, if you looked at the slide, the, the, the area on the slide, or whatever you want to say, on the left, where the, the three parcels that we're talking about tonight are gray, the parcels to the north are still that purple, pink color.
And that's separate ownership.
And that's, that's the commercial that's going to be, that will remain, but that's not involved in this discussion tonight.
Then the next question I have is, is the state granting access to, to this property from Pyramid?
The applicant is in discussions with that, and he could probably further explain that. But there is a possibility that, you know, as you know, Pyramid is under NDOT's jurisdiction. So Mike can probably talk to that, talk to that better.
Good evening, once again, for the record, Mike Raely. We have met with NDOT. We meet the access standards, so the separation from, for, for potentially up to two access points. Those would be right in, right out only. That's why the access to Rockwell, the extension of Rockwell out to the light of Cali de Plata to get the left out. Those are going to be subject to NDOT encroachment permits, so that will be permitted through NDOT. And we'll have to have a traffic impact analysis to determine if, if both will be granted, or only one, and, and exactly what that spacing. But we do meet the, the access management standards.
And that's based on industrial, not commercial?
Correct.
Because traffic.
Yeah, so that will be done with a site-specific project. So NDOT will look at exactly what's being proposed to be built. And then we'll have a, you know, very, very accurate trip generation rates, and then they can look to determine what, what improvements we'll have to do, and where those access points will be.
Okay. Any timeframe as far as when a specific project will be brought in?
Realistically, we'd love to do it today, but we've got to get, you know, we've got a lengthy entitlement process ahead of us. I would guess, you know, the earliest would be next year before those plans would be developed and, and then through. And then the NDOT approval process is another lengthy process in itself, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Commissioner Payton.
Julie, can you just talk a little bit more about the wastewater capacity? It looks like the City of Sparks and Tom Wharf is concerned about the amount of capacity serving Spanish Springs. Can you just talk to that, about, about that a little bit more?
This is Julie Olander for the record. So I'd really ask you to refer you to what the engineering department said. They said that on page, it's in Exhibit D. Let me see, what is that?
It's page 43.
Page 43, thank you. So they gave a lengthy explanation. I'm not an engineer, as you are, but I'm not. So that description to me really captured, they went through the letter, and then they came back with this response. And basically, are saying that the neighborhood commercial that it's zoned currently for, it's going to, the anticipation is that the wastewater is going to be higher. And I could read this off to you. You want me to read that, or is it easier?
No, that's okay.
Okay. I would just ask you to read that, that, it's number one, because they also provide some other comments, too. But that really captures how we can move forward. And I know that engineering and Washoe County and the City of Sparks are in conversation about the wastewater and how they're, how to, how to deal with that. Because there is, as, as Washoe County continuously grow, there's going to be some needs at, at the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant to, to be basically accommodate that. There's even comments, my understanding, within the City of Sparks, that they are looking at how they need to improve that plant to accommodate the growth.
So there is working, everybody is working on an interlocal agreement to figure out. So Washoe County is working with the City of Sparks on an interlocal agreement?
It's an ongoing conversation. That's a regional, my understanding, it's regional, it's a regional treatment center, and so that all three jurisdictions are involved in conversation. But of course, in this situation, Washoe County and Sparks are speaking more about that. And Mike just reminded me that with Donovan Ranch, that's going north of this, of Village Green on the other side of Cali de Plata, that, that development also is going to tie into the wastewater treatment plant that is controlled by, or maintained by the City of Sparks. And so this is definitely an ongoing conversation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further just questions at this time? Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lazarewski, question for staff. Did you guys do an evaluation of comparative sufficiency of undeveloped land zone commercial versus industrial in the area?
You know, I think I'm going to let the applicants, maybe Rex can answer that. I'm not as familiar with that, but I know they did, so I'll let them speak to that.
Once again, Mike Raely. The answer to that is yes. So there's, there's kind of a two-pronged answer to that, to that question. First of all, the area plan itself caps the amount of commercial and industrial that can be within the plan. And both of those caps are, they're bumping right up against them. So there's really not a lot of wiggle room in the plan to, to increase or decrease either way. Mr. Massey, who's with Industrial Realty Group, was actually a commercial broker here in town for years and years. And, and that property is actually, has been actively marketed for commercial use for well over 20 years. And it's just been determined that the need for that much commercial, especially with, given what you have to the north, all those pieces to the north are also neighborhood commercial, and then further up at the entrance to Shadow Ridge subdivision, all of that is commercial as well. So there's, there's quite a bit of commercial further to the north of this project. And if you look at kind of where the commercial is developed in the northern City of Sparks, like Kylie Ranch and Stone, Stone Gate, Stone Brook, it, it really, it makes more sense, just from a spacing perspective, that that new commercial will go out a little bit further to the north. But like I said, the area plan caps it itself. And so really, the, under Washoe County policy, there's not a lot of wiggle room either way.
All right. A question for you as well about the retention basin there. So that's pre-existing stormwater control capacity. Is the change in zoning from commercial to industrial, does that impact at all the runoff calculation? Because in, in the application, all I saw was in the statement that said, this is adjacent to stormwater capture.
Right.
Therefore, it's okay to build in the.
Right. So the, the development, that, that, that is a regional facility that was put in as part of the original master plan for the area. The Washoe County Development Code will not allow us to increase the runoff from our site over pre-existing conditions. So we'll have to detain any stormwater. Same as, so, so those calculations don't change between the commercial or the industrial.
I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any further questions at this time? Hearing no further questions, I will close the public portion, and essentially bring it back to any call for a motion. Well, first off, I want to say thank you to staff and to the presenter. I think there was an excellent job, a lot of detail, because as we've said, this has come back several times to us, and they've been making adjustments depending on the demographics and how the area has changed and legal. So if no one else is prepared, I'm prepared to go forward with a motion at this time. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report, and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as Exhibit A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA 23-0001, having made at least three of the five findings included in Washoe County Code 110.820.15 parentheses D, and having found that the amendments are in conformance with Spanish Springs area plan policies SS.17.1 and 17.2, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master amendments in WMPA 23-0001 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe, to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of this. Ms. Gustad, do we need to do separate motions, or can we do them both at the same time?
That's at the pleasure of the motion maker.
Then I'm going to go for both at the same time. The second motion, I move that after giving reason and considerations to the information contained in the staff report, information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as Exhibit B, recommending the adoption of Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 23-0001, having made all the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15 parentheses D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 23.0001 as set forth in the staff report for submission to Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, do we have a second?
Chair Doncic, I'll second.
Thank you, Serge Savilecik. Any other further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Mrs. Robb, I say nay.
Do we need to do a roll call?
I would do a roll call.
Commissioner Lazarewski, aye.
They'll, they'll do the call.
Sorry.
They have to follow, sir. It's okay.
Sarah Savilecik.
Aye.
Brant St. Doncic.
Aye.
Michael Flick.
Aye.
Daniel Lazarewski.
Aye.
Kate Nelson.
Aye.
Pat Phillips.
No.
Rob Pierce.
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, passes. Thank you very much. We are on to item C. Secretary Lord, if you would, please?
Yeah, this is item 8C, the Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 23-0002, and Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 230002, 46755 Franktown Road. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, approve an amendment to the South Valleys Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to redesignate 2.9 acres of a 53.8 acre parcel from rural to rural residential, and to redesignate 2.9 acres of the same parcel from rural residential to our rural. And two, recommend adoption of an amendment to the South Valleys Regulatory Zone Map to redesignate 2.9 acres of a 53.8 acre parcel from general rural to medium density rural, to redesignate 2.9 acres of the same parcel from medium density rural to general rural, and to redesignate 6.3 acres of the same parcel from general rural to open space. The Regulatory Zone Amendment is subject to final approval by the Board of County Commissioners of the associated master plan amendment, and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. And to approve, I'm sorry, and three, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Staff Planner Kat Oakley.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. We just had to do a roll call. And usually, when we do a nade, do they not have to state what their reasoning is?
Usually, we only do that if it's, if the motion is to deny it.
Okay. We just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, just want to make sure if there's any disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte. Hearing none, we're opening the public hearing. Would please?
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. This case is for a master plan and regulatory zone amendment for a property at 6755 Franktown Road. As you just heard, there are many, many numbers involved. But that is because essentially, some of the rural residential and medium density rural designation, which is co-overlapped entirely, is being moved from the southern part of the parcel to the northern. And so that's why you see redesignating 2.9 acres from rural to rural residential, and then also 2.9 acres from rural residential to rural. So essentially, that is accounting for the movement of those existing designations on the parcel, with the addition of a change of the regulatory zone of 6.3 acres of the parcel from general rural to open space. We'll try to get to the pictures, which I think clarifies it a little. The project site is located west of Washoe Lake there in the Franktown area. Here's a closer-in picture where you can kind of see, it's on the edge of some undeveloped federal lands to the west, and then development of a variety of styles to the east. The parcel itself contains a single-family dwelling on the northern portion and accessory structures throughout. There are steeper slopes on the western portion of the lot, many of them in excess of 30%. And it falls within the West Washoe Valley Rural Character Management Area, or the WWVRCMA. This area is intended to maintain the rural and historic character of that area. And one way it does that is by encouraging a maximum density of one unit per 10 acres, which this parcel conforms with now and will continue to conform with. The current regulatory zoning is 31% medium density rural, and 69% general rural. And the current master plan designation is 31% rural residential, and 69% rural. So as you can see, the numbers mirroring each other. So like I said before, the, the technical request is to change 2.9 acres from rural to rural residential, and 2.9 from rural residential to rural. And when you look at the side-by-side, you can see that it's essentially taking some of the rural residential from the southern part of the parcel up to the northern part. We see an identical arrangement here with taking the 2.9 acres of medium density rural up to the northern portion of the parcel, and then the additional open space zoning, 6.3 acres up there on the northern portion. The reason behind this is that our regulatory, or our development code does not allow somebody to split general rural if you don't have 40 acres in each piece. And the intention of this MP RZA is to enable the property owner to split the northern 12, about 12 acres from the rest of the parcel. And so the open space is, allows them to draw the line there that they're wanting to draw. There is no increase in density from this request. In fact, if you're getting technical about it, there is a decrease from 4.3 units to 4.1. Of course, we don't do rounding, so that, that would just be four. It shifts the denser zoning to the northern portion of the parcel, which does have the generally flatter areas, so is more suitable for higher density development. And then it adds open space over some of the developmentally constrained areas. Here, again, is a picture to show that. So the dark yellow on the left is the 30% and more slopes. The yellow is the 15 to 30, and then the rest is. The yellow is the 15 to 30, and then the rest is below 15. So you can see that essentially there's just a hillside here, it gets quite steep, and the denser regulatory zone, the medium density rural, is all contained on those flatter portions of the parcel. In terms of surrounding zoning, this general rural, medium density rural split zone is common in the area. Essentially, the developmentally constrained areas were designated general rural, other areas are medium density rural, and so there's, because of that, currently a medium slash identical compatibility with all those surrounding parcels. With the addition of the open space regulatory zone, that's considered highly compatible with both general rural and medium density rural, so the compatibility stays the same and slightly increases because of the open space. For facilities, that property is served by Well and Septic, the Washoe County Water Rights Manager, and the Nevada Division of Water Resources reviewed this, provided comments, and didn't have any concerns. The Washoe County Health District commented just to say that for any future division of land, the Well and Septic that serves their existing dwelling would have to remain on the same parcel as the house that they are serving. A neighborhood meeting was held via Zoom on January 4th of 2023. One member of the public attended to ask questions about the potential for a four-lot subdivision on the property in the future if it were sold. Of course, it could theoretically be divided into four lots now, and that will remain the same if this regulatory zone and master plan amendment is approved. Thirty-two property owners within 2,250 feet received notice, and many agencies reviewed this, provided their comments, and staff can make all the findings in the staff report, and that includes some findings specific to the South Valleys Area Plan that are listed there on the slide and were broken down in more detail in the staff report. Here is a proposed motion for approval for the MPA and one for the RZA, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kat. Is there a?
Stuck with me again.
Looking presentation?
Good evening. Once again, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation here representing the project, the property owner. Also with me is Rebecca Dixon, who also represents the property owner. Kat did a great job going through this, and I, before I start, I want to thank Kat and Trevor. This, in 30 years of doing this, this has been one of the most confusing ones that I've ever done, and they really did work with us to get where we are today, so we really appreciate that. I have a brief PowerPoint, and I think, I'm going to skip, like the last presentation, I'll skip over the first few and kind of explain why we're doing this in the first place, and I think that'll put everything in perspective for you. So these are, so essentially, there's an existing home on the north portion of the property, and the property owner wishes to split that home off onto its own parcel and then sell that home and retain the balance of the property. So that's, that's what triggered all this, was a parcel map request where we found out, well, we've got, we've got the zoning we need, but it's in the wrong location, so. So this, just some views of the site, if you didn't get a chance to go out and take a look at it. So as Kat mentioned, no increase in density is proposed. It allows for that new 12.6 acre parcel to cover the existing home. No new development is requested, so essentially zero impact over, as a result of this. So there's the parcel map, you can see the parcel, and then you can see the line where it's drawn, that they're at the top to, to, to cut that 12.6 acres from the existing 53 acre parcel. And these are the same that Kat had, except hers were prettier. And just kind of a comment on the zoning, as some of you that have been on the commission, I know Commissioner Chivilcheck will know, in these kind of outlying areas that haven't, I mean, the last building boom here really was during the Comstock line, 150 years ago. Those zoning boundaries were based off old USGS mapping. It wasn't with modern survey or anything like that. So those zoning boundaries don't necessarily reflect the constraints that are on site, and so as the exhibit that Kat showed, the new zoning boundaries that we're proposing are much more in line with the actual constraints of the site and the usable areas of the site. So it's really, at the end of the day, a cleanup, and as I said there, it's a very complicated process for a very simple request. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, at this point, before we go into the questions, is there any public comment either in-house or via Zoom?
There is no public comment in chambers nor on Zoom.
All right, thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back to commission for questions. Commissioner Flick, you had a question?
After assuming that the action is favorable tonight, can a larger?
Could you speak with the mic, please, Mr. Flick?
Mr. Flick, they can't see, hear you, sir.
It's on.
I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay. Assuming that you have a favorable response from the commission tonight, is the larger parcel resplitable?
Yes, and it is today. So as, as Kat mentioned, right now, the existing parcel could be split into, into 4.8 units, I think it is. This takes it to 4.1, one of which will be the new parcel that's created. So in theory, an additional three parcels could be divided in the future, but that, that potential exists now, so that doesn't change over what exists today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
This is for you. There is a building up at the top of the western boundary?
Yes, the barn.
Oh, that's a barn.
There's a barn that's well over 100 years old that will just be retained, and is permitted as an agricultural building, so that, that will, that will remain.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was all.
Yep, yep.
It's beautiful out there.
It is.
Commissioners, any further questions? Hearing no further questions?
Commissioner Lazarewski.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
A question for the applicant. I believe there's Forest Service Road that comes through the parcel, is that correct?
I believe, no, there's no, it's, there's no, the, the, I know the road that you're talking about, but it's, it's not on our parcel. There's no easement for Forest Service Roads, but there is a Forest Service Road, I believe, to the south that, I know when I was at UNR, we used to go back into that valley behind there for classes, and I've taken that road, so I know another road you're referring to.
All right, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any further questions? Seeing no further questions, I will close the public hearing and bring it back either for commission discussion or a call for motions.
Chair Doncheck, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please, Sarah, by Sarah Chivilcheck.
And I will do the master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment in one motion.
Thank you.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained in Exhibit A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 823-0002, having made at least three find, three of the five findings included in the Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15 (D), and having found that the amendments is in conformance with the South Valleys Area Plan Policy, SV.29.1 and S.29.3, I further move to certify the resolution and propose the master plan amendment in WMPA 823-0002 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission. I further move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as Exhibit B recommending adoption of a Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 23-0002, having made all findings included in the Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15 (D). I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 23-0002, and it's set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
I know, that's your turn. Well, we have a motion, we have a second?
Robb will second it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion at this time?
Can I get some clarification? I stop both Commissioner Nellson and then Pierce, who's, I think?
Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We move, Commissioner, Secretary Lloyd, if you could read item 8D, please?
Sure thing. This is Regulatory Zone Amendment, Case Number WRZA 23-0004 for Bellhaven. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a Regulatory Zone Amendment to change the regulatory zoning on one 89.8 acre parcel of land from 54.7 acres of medium density rural, 0.2 units per acre, 61% of the parcel, to 1.8 acres of high density rural, let's see, and 33.22 acres of general rural, to 41.28 acres of high density rural, 21.56 acres of low density rural, and 29, I'm sorry, 26.96 acres of open space, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter, once again, is Staff Planner Julie Olander.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, of course, once again, I have to ask, are there any disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte at this time? Hearing none, thank you, Julie.
Good evening, Julie Olander, for the record. So as Planning Manager, Mr. Lloyd read, this is a Regulatory Zone Amendment to, for an 89 acre parcel, and currently it's 54 acres are medium density rural, 1.8 acres are high density rural, and 33 acres are general rural. The proposal is to change 41 acres to high density rural, 21 acres to low density rural, and 26 acres to open space. The parcel is outlined in blue, it's off of Bellhaven Road, and just to give you some orientation, I also included Holcombe Ranch Road out there, so you can sort of see where that is. Here is a map showing the current zoning on the left and the proposed zoning on the right. And then there's a breakdown here of what it is currently. So general rural, 33 acres, and that will go to open space, about 26 acres, and then the medium density rural, which is 54 acres, and that will primarily go to low density, and that's 21 acres, and then we have high density rural, which is 1.8, and then the high density rural will be 41 acres. And here is it just showing the proposal, the lower half will be LDR, low density rural, and there is an existing house on that property, and then the area on to, you can see where the OS and the, is on Dry Creek, and then also to the, to the right, and that area is following basically the slope, so the GR is now no longer there, the OS is following the slope of the, of the property. And I just wanted to show you sort of the surrounding properties, that there is MDR in the area, there's OS, there's HDR, there's also LDS, which is lot, smaller lots. And I just want to make a correction, in the staff report, it showed that the current number of lots is 13, and the proposal is to 23, however, that is incorrect, and the current lots are, there's 12, possibility of 12 current lots, and the proposal is of 18 lots. And you can see the breakdown is in GR, you could have one lot, and the MDR, they could have 10 lots, and the HDR, they could have seven, and the proposal is, to OS doesn't allow lots, so there's no lots available there. The LDR allows two lots, and the HDR will allow 16 lots, so a total of 18 lots. The applicant is proposing to put the properties on individual wells, and water whites, water rights will have to be purchased privately, sewer service will be provided by, individual septic systems by future homeowners, all required facilities will, were reviewed, will be reviewed at the time of development, and any initial needs will be addressed then. The applicant was, the application was reviewed by various agencies and departments. Just want to point out the suitability there, the majority of the property is designated as most suitable for development, however, as I said, along the Dry Creek area, and then that area to the southeast, has a, is designated with slopes greater than 15 and, 15% and 30%. And as I spoke earlier, the applicant is proposing to zone those areas to OS, and the OS will follow closely where the slope is located. Currently, the acreage for GR is that 33 acres, and the new proposal is 26.9 acres to go to OS, and that remaining 6.3 acres is, is within the most suitable, is designated as most suitable, and that will be included in either the LDR or HDR areas. A neighborhood meeting was held on January 20th at McKinley Art Center, there were three attendees, the discussion was about the lot sizes, do not want lots under five acres, the impact to the wells, and the well impact to the existing properties, the septic system and possible, the possibility of connecting to sewer, and then they had a question about the lot configuration. The area, the application was noticed to within 750 feet of the site, and there were 76 notices that were sent out. A legal notice was placed in the Reno Gazette on the 23rd of January. Various agencies and departments have provided comments, which are included in Exhibit B. Staff is able to make all the findings, and they're explained in the staff report, and also I provide a possible motion. The applicant is available, I believe, on Zoom. If you have questions for him, they do not have a presentation.
All right, thank you, Julie. At this time, is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom on?
There's no public comment in chambers nor on Zoom. I do have Representatives Brandon Freeman and Michael Smith, both on Zoom for any questions.
Okay, all right, then we will bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff or the applicants via Zoom at this time?
I do. Commissioner Phillips, a question to staff. Are there any other high-density rules, units, in that neighborhood? It does have that one area, and I'm somewhat, I went up there for the first time today just to look at the layout. They have the Bellhaven Road there, but it is no trespassing. In fact, all areas around it are no trespassing. Are there any hiking trails through there? I know there is one that goes to a BLM access.
I'm Julie Olander, for the record. I sent this out to the Parks Department, they have indicated that there's no real access from this property to any trailheads or BLM property, and so that, no, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, just for clarification, we're talking about a whole area of private property, correct?
Correct.
This is, the change is just within a private property, not, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I just talked about Bellhaven, as its development moves forward, they will have to make improvements to Bellhaven, and I believe it's noticed, no trespassing by the current property owner.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions at this time? Yes?
Commissioner Lazarewski for staff. In the Washoe County Community Services comment, they referred to the county district health regulations that would require a five-acre minimum lot size to have a septic system and domestic well. I, I suppose that would be, in theory, a matter for the, for the parcel remap, not for the rezoning, but is that something that was considered in the, in upzoning this to be two and a half acre minimum instead of five?
So that would come into, as the development moved forward, then they would have to comply with that comment, yes?
We wouldn't be doing it here.
It would come into play at this point.
Okay, but even though we are upzoning it to allow for two and a half acre parcels... But even though we are upzoning it to allow for 2.5-acre parcels per that rule, if they don't... If they intend to proceed with just private wells and septic systems, the parcel minimums would still be 5 acres, correct?
Yes, I'm just looking at the health comment again. I thought that they didn't object to this, so that was basically... Are you referring to the health department comments?
Yeah, page 30. Recommend approval with the following comment: shall acquire and relinquish water rights, and then limitations on lot size for parcels supported by an individual domestic well and individual septic system may apply. They may be limited to 5-acre minimum size to allow for well and septic per Washoe County District Health Regulations.
May be limited to...
Yes, so I think that, you know, that's something that applicant will have to look at as they move forward.
If I may, yeah, that will be a requirement at the time that they come in for some development at a future date, but yeah, typically, the rule is 5-acre minimums on septic. With the caveat, exception, that they allow for the first parcel split to be smaller than 5 acres. Anything more than that, then they have to meet that 5-acre minimum or connect with to a municipal sewer service.
And there has been discussion about sewer service out there. As some of you know, there's a parcel development to the north of this one, and so there's been some comments about as these parcels areas develop, maybe we'll see sewer service out there. I'm not sure if that's a reality, but there's been chat, conversation about that.
One other question, and perhaps this... You may not know the answer, and no judgment if you don't, but being required to buy and relinquish water rights sufficient to serve additional houses doesn't necessarily put the water in the ground where the domestic wells for those houses are. So, is there any rule or process to require that the water rights being relinquished have some proximity or logic to the location of the water use?
Julie Olander, for the record. So, I did speak specifically to engineering about the water rights and what would be required. That is managed through the state of Nevada. We don't really have oversight on that and how that goes forward. However, they do look at... My understanding is they do look at the existing wells that are being served out there and the availability of water. So, that is taken into their assessment of providing or allowing, you know, more wells in the area. But however, that's not something that Washoe County has oversight on.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions at this time? So, at this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to commission for questions or a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Vasquezky?
I move that after giving reasoned consideration of the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the planning commission adopt the resolution included as Exhibit A recommending adoption of the regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 23-0004, having made all the requisite findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15 (D) and the Southwest Truckee Meadows Area Plan Policy SW.20.3. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed regulatory zone amendment in WRZA 23-0004 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at this time? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you. At that point, motion passes, ladies and gentlemen. If we could move on to item 9, which is chair and commission items. Commissioners, do you have any future agenda items that you would like to bring forth to staff for any information on at this time? None, thank you very much. Then we move on to item 9B. Is there any future items or requests for information from staff in specific at this time? Hearing none, thank you. We'll move on. Item 10, directors' legal counsel items. Item 10A, reported any previous planning commission items. Secretary Lloyd, please?
No BC items to report, but I did want to report on the series of workshops that were held last week. We held four of them. This is for Invision Washoe 2040. They were very well... Well, I shouldn't... I'll take that back. I was going to say very well attended. The first two were not. The first one, we only had one gentleman show up, and this was for the Verde, Spanish Springs, Truckee Canyon areas, and Sun Valley. They got progressively more and more people to attend the meetings. We did have some commissioners, planning commissioners attend. All in all, I thought that was very well received. We received a lot of very good input from the community. The engagement was great. We had a chance to really showcase the update, the master plan, and what we provided with the drafts are available online. If you... An email will be going to all of the commissioners, showing you the location, and there is an opportunity to even comment on that webpage, and I invite all of you to do so. We still have... The only area plan that was not... That we did not showcase was the High Desert. We will be having a separate Zoom meeting specifically for the High Desert residents within the next couple of weeks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Ms. Gustafson, anything legal information and updates at this time?
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time, is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom?
I have no public comment in chambers nor Zoom.
Thank you very much. At this point, Washoe County Planning Commission for April is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. And again, Trevor, please let the staff know they did an excellent job all across the board tonight. Thank you. There's a lot of really good detail, really good points. Thank you.
Recording stopped.